I got seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and call this work session to order. Y'all have to bear with me because I'm new and I've got big shoes to fill, but Lonnie's out of, he's out of town for the, this one, and he'll be out of town, I think, for the regular commission meeting too. So we'll try to get through this. First thing coming up, we open the court. The invocation and pledge will be led by the District Eight Commissioners, invocation by Mr. Whitaker, and the pledge to the flag, the American flag by Mr. Krug. Is that okay? Then we do the roll call. Next thing on here is approval of the minutes. Minutes of the February 24th commission meeting have been distributed. Please let Rita know if any corrections that need to be made. We move right along to the next one. Announcements? Are there any announcements that need to be made tonight? Anything? Under announcements, anything new? Okay. All right, then we'll move to set the agenda. The next thing is citizens' response to the agenda items. If they wished to speak, they'd come up and sign in at the podium. Art number nine, county mayor report. Mayor, is there anything you wish to report at tonight's work session? Nothing tonight. Then we'll move right into the committee report, board reports. Had a steering committee March the 4th, personnel March the 4th, Parks and Rec March 11th, Public Works March 11th, Budget and Finance March 17th, First Responders March 24th. Was there any other committee meetings that we need to put down that's not listed here? If not, we'll go right into active business appointments, district, three commissary committees. We'd like to welcome Commissioner Linda Bruce on her recent appointment. Ms. Bruce has been appointed to the Parks and Recreation Committee and the First Response Service Committee. Are there any questions or concerns from the commission? Are you okay with that, Ms. Bruce? Glad to have you. Then the next thing we're going is ordinances, the public hearing and second reading on the Jake Brake Regulations. We will hold a public hearing before moving into the second reading for ordinance 316-2025-03, implementing Jake Brake Regulations. Sheriff Russell, do you have anything to add to this topic? Are there any questions from the commission? If not, we'll move right along. We're moving pretty quick here tonight. That's good. First reading on ordinance 317-2025-04, the impact fee. First reading of three for the impact fee increases, also known as the adequate facilities tax. The last increase was in 2018. This has been reviewed by the Codes and Zoning Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee over the past few months. Are there any questions from the commission in regard to this? Does anybody want to answer that? What's the current fee structure now to Mr. Thomas or Mr. Gully?
Still fifteen hundred.
I got, Ms. Maehan can answer it for you.
So currently for the residential buildings, if the square footage of the living area is twenty-one forty or two thousand one hundred and forty square feet, the impact fee is fifteen hundred dollars. If it's over that, then you multiply the square footage by point seven, and that's what the impact fee would be. And that's for residential. For commercial, it's different. You do the square footage multiplied by point three, and then also for industrial, the same thing. So this addresses differently for the residential, commercial, and industrial as it is written on the impact ordinance right there.
Mr. Thomas?
Rosalie, I was asked a question earlier, and maybe you can help me make sure I was telling the right thing. On the impact fee, that's, so that's per rooftop on a lot, correct? So if an apartment complex was building three units and they were doing twelve total, that would be, impact fee would be on each three-unit building, correct?
For instance, when we approve the green top, for each apartment, each townhome that is, it's per townhome, not per rooftop, per townhome.
Anybody else got any questions? Mr. Grigory?
One question. And this may not even be a road that we want to go down, and if not, it's fine. It was mentioned in Budget Committee just, you know, earlier this evening that, you know, at least one department is going to be asking for raises for its staff and maybe others. If we wanted to, maybe, because right now it has what currently would go in to general, stay in general, and the remainder going to the capital projects fund, would we be able to amend this, say, between readings if, if we wanted to maybe keep a little more in general fund to try to fund some, some of those raises?
Anybody got any other discussion in regards to this? I think we're gonna be voting on what we've talked about earlier, I mean, what was, what's on the agenda. Has anybody else got any, Mayor, or anybody got any more comments in regard to this? Gully, Mr. G.
Ms. Rosalie, just off what you asked a minute ago, there's a pretty, if I understand it correctly, there's a bit of a difference between a townhome, which is an individual living unit, and let's say a duplex or a quadplex or a triplex unit. So would that be the same in terms of townhomes, you said it would be per townhome. Would that be the same in terms of duplex, quadplex, things of that nature?
Yes, sir. You're correct.
So that would be per, if it's a quadplex, that's per quadplex?
Per unit, not per quadplex, per unit.
So it'd be times four? Is that what I'm understanding?
Could you repeat that, please?
So that would be four times if it's a quadplex?
Yes, that is correct.
Um, Mr. Kerr?
And of course, that's for families living there. That many more cars, that much more water, everything that affects an impact fee. So that makes sense.
But we'll be voting on this like it is. If it fails, we could go back and, I guess, what you discussed there.
Now, as, if it passes next week as is, if between first and second reading, could it be altered? Or would we have to go back and start all over again? That was my question.
I mean, my thought process on it, since I've been asked, is simply, you know, you don't even know what kind of, you're talking about employee benefits, increases in wages. You don't even know what that amount is. So, you know, at this point, if there's a discussion on that topic and it's been done in work session before it gets to the floor, would be my recommendation, which is tonight, it's coming up on another reading of this pretty quick. Now, if you're looking at going back and amending an ordinance, you can do that at a later date. If you see fit, then you'd be diverting it from whatever the overage is over the fifteen hundred that would have been previously allocated to the capital funds, then it would go to something else at that point. But I, you know, I know we've had these discussions before, but it's, it wouldn't, I would not recommend altering what's presented without having an adequate knowledge of what the increases for those are yet. We've got budget talks that are coming up. That would be my recommendation.
Any more discussion on this? Any questions for Ms. Maehan? If not, we'll move into ordinance 318-2025-05, rezoning C2 to A1, or C2 slash A1 to C2 slash R3 on McMurray Boulevard. It'd be the first reading of ordinance 318-2025-05, rezoning the parcel next to the high school from agricultural to residential. Ms. Maehan, please give us, can you give us a summary of this request?
Yes. So the planning commission heard this request, and you do have a map of what all the different zones are surrounding this parcel. Now, this, the eighteen point two five is the parcel number, not the acreage. The acreage of this parcel of land is, well, I had it in front of me just a moment. Thank you so very much, eleven point seven three, and they are asking to rezone eighteen, excuse me, eight point one nine acres of the eleven point seven three, and that is the back half there to be R3, which would allow for multifamily dwellings. Now, the gentleman that presented this request is here tonight. He does have a concept plan, if you would like to look at it. Again, the planning commission has always wanted to be the corridor along Highway 25 to be C2 commercial, to have that commercial along the, the big path there, and that's what we've done in the past as well. And Mr. Welker is here. Do you? You could just tell him.
I'm gonna cut you off.
That's fine, all right.
So we took, of the eleven acres, we took eight acres in the back and left a strip of almost three acres along the front to be kind of, we call it neighborhood retail. So it'd be probably like a drive-through coffee shop, you know, there'd be a strip center about twelve thousand square feet. There could be, you know, fitness center, barber shops, we've seen things like that. We'll probably end up, we're gonna amend the site plan a little bit, not the commercial section, but we'll end up probably getting another little out parcel up there as a restaurant or a bank or something like that. And then, and then to the far right of this plan, which would be closest to the high school, we obviously have an entrance for the residential community in the back. There'd be a clubhouse and a little, you know, children's park and stuff right there next to it. But currently, they're situated, all be two and three-bedroom townhomes. So kind of the read on the market was that, you know, a lot of families here, it's next to a high school, kids can walk to school, retail in front, so there's services on-site, a little bit more of a mixed-use type plan.
Are you gonna put paths there where they can walk to school?
I think that'd be great, you know. It's like, you know, at Harvard, what they did is they just let everybody make the paths, and they found out how they liked to walk them, and they paved them later, so maybe, you know.
Any questions from Mr. Welker from the commission? Mr. Grigory?
After this, a question for Mr. Welker, Ms. Rosalie. I know at a, I think at a previous meeting, Mr. Gully had mentioned with a different development, if a turn lane would be required, would, would something like, would this, would something like this require a turn lane?
Yeah, we suspect it needs a deceleration lane. So they didn't end up getting in this plan in time, but there will probably likely be a deceleration turn lane adjacent to the property, on the property. So not a third turn lane coming across, but one. Yes.
It does. Come and, and it doesn't need it?
No, it does have regulations. It will need a turn lane.
In the middle?
Not in the middle.
But just coming from our, that way, but not from two thirty-one, four-way stop.
They will have engineers that will design that, and the planning commission, they will have to go forward the site plan in order to have that. And as we discussed at one of the other county commission meetings on whether, if there's so many living structures there, it would require a turn lane.
How many square feet are the two bedrooms?
Currently, they're right around a thousand for the two bedrooms, and I think eleven fifty-eight for the three bedrooms. It's still kind of a concept phase. We haven't gotten the architect involved in actual, you know, plans yet at that site. But this was predicated on another project that this engineering group had done, and so to get a density layout, we call it, so. I was actually supposed to have lunch with the architect today, but I had to reschedule, so I'll see him tomorrow morning for brunch.
So I also wanted to mention that we have talked about this in the past, that yes, they are requesting an R3 zoning, and what will happen with the R3, they believe you said seventy-two units at this current time? Seventy-six. According to our ordinance, they would be allowed to do ninety-eight units, according to the square footage that's in our ordinance. If they didn't do this, you know, if it changed hands, someone else could bring forward a plan that would have ninety-eight units on there, according to our zoning ordinance.
Just a reminder, I appreciate you, you bringing forth what current plans are. We're not voting on those plans, folks. We're voting on a rezoning of property. Please keep this in mind of where we are. We are looking at a rezoning of property. If we zone it R3, they can do these things. If we zone it C2, they can do these things. It's not our job to make the decision on what the rest of those go. We are voting, looking at next week, a zoning change.
But he was saying it wouldn't have to have commercial up front. That could also be changed? Or whoever knows the answer. I don't mean to put you on the spot. Is that what that means? It could change?
So again, the planning commission has decided that the corridor along Highway 25 should remain C2. So if they were to bring forward a site plan, we would require them to have like a C2 band there.
So the way planning has been doing it, you can notice when you're looking at the, the map in your packet pertaining to this, you'll see across the street, you've got C2 in front, you've got the A1 behind it, the subdivision that they're building. We're, we've been keeping, trying our best to keep C2 along that corridor, and then residential behind that. But Mr. Gully is correct, it's eight acres that they're wanting to rezone to R3. This gentleman could, you know, whoever's doing this can sell that property off, can change their mind. It is open zoning, the way all our zoning is done. So you have to look, what's the most that can be put on that property in that zone? And does that fit where we're at? Now, Codes and Zoning is looking at a process, it'd be a separate zone that's gonna be coming before this body, hopefully in the next three or four months, called PUD zoning. And that is a unit development, so that when someone brings a property like this, they're bringing their full packet, and you would be then voting on the project going in that zone, and that locks that project with that zoning, would give an option of having a locked-in deal and not open zoning for everything. It won't exclude the current open zoning, but that process will give us an option for larger projects that we don't want to end up like we are on Melrose with ten acres that just, I mean, it's sitting there R3, just waiting for a headache on the, from an infrastructure situation. At least with this property, you're on a major thoroughfare. They will have to extend the turning lane. That'll be at all at their cost. So that all being said, it did come from planning with a favorable. I mean, if you're gonna have this kind of development, twenty-five or the new one forty-one's where you're gonna want that kind of development being located.
I'd like to add to that, too, that when they first came forward requesting a zoning, they did request to do a PUD. And I said, unfortunately, at this time, we do not have PUD ordinances in Trousdale County, but we are looking to add those.
And the, the PUDs, we can do a flexible zoning PUD where if they bring a, something forward, a plan forward, and then want to sell it off before it's done or change it, then that plan has to come back before us, too. So maybe we should think about waiting until we get the PUD, PUD zoning passed on this.
So this is being brought forward for a C2, R3. If, if you would please refer back to your map, we already have the similar situation, a parcel over to the left where it is C2 in the front, and it is R3 in the back. If you recall, the gentleman that brought forward a concept that had the English cottages, that's where this is. So we do have that already within the same vicinity.
Any more discussion on this or questions for Mr. Welker or Ms. Rosalie? Is anybody had, the planning had anybody from the y'all hadn't posted it about the rezoning? Or has it been posted out there? Has anybody, it has?
The sign has been posted. There has been a public hearing posting in the paper.
You had any of the community come in against it or talk, I mean, has anybody expressed any desires on it?
That, I have had several people inquire as in what's going next for the high school, and I've had that discussion with them, and there hasn't been any negative.
I'd say we probably have a few here, whether it's a record, commission meeting, might want to sign in and speak to, Ms. Kerr?
I just wonder, would the developer, and I'm sure you're waiting to buy the land to see if it passes, but would the developer somehow be willing to only make the back portion R3 and make the front portion commercial?
That's what it is. They're only asking to rezone the back portion R3 and keeping the front portion R2.
Need to get our questions answered tonight. I mean, we've got Mr. Welker here and Rosalie. I mean, where we won't base so many questions on commission night, the nights tonight to try to get the questions answered. Does anybody else express, Mr. Thomas?
So like I said before, if we're gonna, if we're gonna have a large development like this, this is the place to have it. That's why planning sent four with a favorable. If this same scenario had been on a side street in the urban district where you would have all the traffic from possible ninety-six units, ninety-eight units dumping into that, it would have, it obviously would not have been sent with a favorable. But this is a main thoroughfare. Yeah, it's gonna create some more traffic during school time, but they're gonna have to address that in their plan of egress and exiting on, onto that road. That'll be between them and T-dot. We don't have any real control over that, other than making suggestions. But when they bring the site plan to planning, that's gonna be addressed at that point.
Yeah, all they're asking now is to be rezoned, isn't it? Mr. Amber?
Do you guys, do you guys have a timeframe on when it will be completed?
So we need to submit for our financing on April fifteenth, and we'd probably know by mid-June whether or not that goes in place, and then we'd probably break ground January.
And that does, that question does bring up what Mr. Gully was saying. It doesn't really matter what his project is that he's bringing forward. If we do this and he doesn't get his financing, it's still gonna be permanently R3 with C2 in the front. So we don't need to look at it from a project's perspective at this moment. Can the community in that area support up to ninety-eight units and the flow of traffic and the infrastructure impact that a development would cause? That's what we need to consider.
Was all that discussed in planning, and everybody's still in favorable recommendation, everyone on the, on the planning commission? That's all I've got. Anybody else got any questions? We need, like I said, we need to bring the questions out and try to get answers tonight, where we won't. Mr. Welker, you got anything else?
And if something comes up afterwards, welcome. She's got my contact information, or welcome to provide it, you guys. Welcome to email me or call me or anything.
Thank you for coming. Oh, now, I guess we move right into budget amendments. I don't think there's really no fund balance draws on any of these, and all these were discussed in the Budget and Finance Committee, and I think all of them was recommended, favorable recommendation. Does anybody need us to go over any, or do we like Mr. Gully to go over any of these? Since he's the chairman of the Budget and Finance? Do I need to go over each one or just leave it at the end?
Mr. Grigory?
Yes, sir.
I, I think the only one in here that, I don't think there was much discussion on any, as went through, they all went favorable in Budget Finance, just six o'clock meeting started tonight. I might point you to page forty-one of your packet. I think you'll see that the, your Public Works, County Buildings now, I'm sorry, has worked hard to get a generator in place in front that's needed, well-needed. I think that's one that was, it is the only one here. The reason I bring it out, it is an ARPA fund draw. Ms. Amy and I were talking a little bit ago, somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand, what's ARPA setting at on cash on hand right now. So it's a little under, I believe, but in that number, not exact. The eighty thousand draw here would certainly not be out of its, putting that one at a deficit. Was favorable and needed. I will mention as well, this came to us, the eighty thousand is a contractor somewhat local, quite a bit cheaper than the original, I think it came and was discussed over a year ago at a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I believe.
So I can speak a little further on that. As the chairman of that committee, we actually ended up taking four different bids. Thompson Machine for the Caterpillar, Bransford Taylor Electric, who actually is a manufacturer of generators. The, they're actually based here in Tennessee. And then Capital Electric, which is a electrician, a local-owned business, who is gonna also be installing, in his quote, a Taylor generator. We ended up going with the Bransford unit. The Thompson Machine, just to give you all quick numbers, was a hundred and forty-eight thousand, was their latest good-for-thirty day. Bransford was at seventy-nine nine. Direct with Taylor was gonna be sixty-seven, and Capital Electric was gonna be eighty-four thousand. The reason we went for Bransford instead of Taylor or Capital Electric being that Bransford was a little more than Capital, and a little, excuse me, a little more than Taylor and a little less than Capital Electric, was the lead time. Bransford's going with a Kohler generator, and they can get the generator within ten weeks. Taylor would have to make the generator, and it would take thirty-six to forty weeks before we would even get it, before they could install it. So the committee voted unanimously to go with Bransford. That does come with a five-year warranty. And to answer a question that was asked before Budget and Finance, that's a twenty-four-hour fuel tank that goes with that machine. And that is a complete install that will run the whole building.
This is something we've been discussing in the past couple of years. I mean, it's finally, we got, might, maybe get them, make a move on it. Does anybody else got any discussion in regard to this or any questions? Alrighty. I don't think we need to discuss more of these budget amendments. Like I said, they all, that was the one that was, we'll bring them all up on the one by one, I guess, on the night of the commission. But the next thing, is there any other business that needs to come before the commission's, the night's work, at tonight's work session? Mr. Thomas?
One more thing I'd like to bring up, coming out of that subcommittee meeting on solid waste. We've received our new contract for Smith County for dumping. That is gonna go up thirty-seven percent, so that will go up to fifty dollars a ton. So that's, that's quite a bit of a jump, but we don't really have much of a choice because any, the closest place is gonna be twice as much when you cycle in the fuel costs and twice as much when you cycle in the fuel costs and time to drive it there to what they're gonna charge us in back. Cliff was saying all inclusive, the closest place would be three times the fifty dollars to Smith County. So we're kind of stuck there. That being said, we were already looking at having to do an increase on our commercial dumpsters to offset the cost of dumpsters. Currently, the dumpsters are just given to commercial businesses. Well, those are a thousand dollars a pop now and they're having to be replaced as they rust out. So we're looking at trying to, instead of the taxpayers absorbing that cost, pass that on to the business who's actually using that dumpster. But now that this increase has happened, we're probably gonna have to look at an increase in residential also. So we'll get final numbers at our next meeting and should have something for the commission next month to vote on.
Thank you for that information. Is there anything, any other business that would need to be addressed at next Monday's commission meeting? If not, there's any public comment? I don't see nobody from the public here. I hear a motion to adjourn. Appreciate y'all coming. Thank you for your patience.